Our invocation followed by the Pledge of Legions.
Agree with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for another chance to be here, and I thank you again for these people who give of their time to serve. We pray that you would give them wisdom and strength and that you would guide them today as they make decisions and as they discuss. What we also thank you is today we have sent our children back to school. We pray for your blessings on them and for the teachers and staff as well. We pray for a great year of learning and friendships and for your protection on them in our schools. So, Lord, thank you for this meeting. Thank you for your presence with us. May we honor you in all that is done here. In Jesus' name we pray. Say the pledge.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 on September 5th, 2023, and we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please. Yes?
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is approval of the agenda, and we'll call on our acting city administrator, Bill Somer. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor. No changes tonight?
No changes to the agenda. I would entertain a motion proving the agenda as presented. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, and there are no bids to award. Under petitions, communications, and open forum, at this time we will open the floor to the open forum. Anyone wishing... Yep, we'll recognize you in just a second here. At this time, anyone wishing to speak to the council in the open forum, please step to the lectern. Identify yourself, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for hearing me. Joe Clausen, we currently have purchased home at 104 South Lakeside Drive, and I believe that there's just a misclassification, I guess that I'm hoping to appeal to you. We purchased the house with the purpose of creating a home for our son. However, we did it through our LLC, which we were told by our tax people was the smart way to do it. Because of that, we've been classified as a rental property, but we are not a rental property. So with that rental property comes a $500 fee and inspections. So I'm just appealing to you that you hear it and that it would be able to be waived. I believe it's a simple misclassification.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. We're gonna send this to staff for, you know, to get their input on, to do their research on, and make sure it's Joe Clausen, 104 South Lakeside Drive.
That is correct.
We'll make sure that we get staff a response to you to this concern and get a resolve.
Fabulous. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else wishing to speak, please step to the lectern and identify yourself.
My name is Rhonda Kraft, and I would like to address you. I'm getting bad luck over there. I have a petition against the city's ordinance, it's ordinance 90.25 and 90.04. Saying that I can't have my camper or my trailer parked in my yard or my driveway because it has to be on the side street or in the backyard. And there's two ordinances. One says I can have four vehicles in my driveway, two of them being motorized or non-motorized. So therefore, they're allowing me to keep my trailer in my yard. But the city's also saying that I'm parking on the grass, which they have come out and stated, no, that's definitely not grass, it's gravel that's there and weeds have grown up in it. The city itself has plenty of parking lots that they need to address that are owned by the city that have weeds growing up through them. I have pictures on my camera if you would like to see them. And also, I am addressing, asking for a new variance or new code, whatever you want to call it, be entered into the thing. Saying that back before 2021, you could have as many vehicles as you want in your driveway as long as your driveway can hold them, meaning motorized or non-motorized, as long as there's license insured and operable and insured when required by law. That's what my ordinance reads. Right now, there's people that are being told that they have to park their extra vehicles out on the street. That is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. How dangerous are we going to make our city? You're saying you're trying to make our city more beautiful, but yet you're making it dangerous. You have vehicles parked on both sides of the road. You have children at play darting out of nowhere from the parked vehicles. You're trying to maneuver in between vehicles and watching out for children and doors opening up and everything else. You guys have created a dangerous situation where if these vehicles would be in their driveways that can hold the extra vehicles, you wouldn't have that. You would have an open space that the people can drive through and see children at play and know that there's danger ahead and to be careful driving around, not wondering, okay, is there anybody around? And am I going to hit this guy? Or, you know, is somebody coming at me? You know, make it easier, make it simple. Stop making it dangerous for ourselves. I'm asking that the ordinance be changed back to where you can have whatever you want in your driveway as long as it's licensed, insured, and operable and not parked on the grass in your driveway.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraft. And we'll, I think, take this opportunity to direct this to staff and ask them to come back to the council at a future committee meeting to provide an update on the changes that have been made, because I've heard other people have some questions about the ordinance. So, thank you very much.
When are you planning on bringing that?
It'll be on an agenda. I can't say for sure, but we'll definitely direct staff to come back with. Just give us some updates on what changes have been made and how...
It'll be a Wednesday morning.
It'll be a Wednesday morning meeting.
This Wednesday morning?
No, no, it won't be this Wednesday. We'll ask for it to be on the 27th of September's agenda.
Okay, because if you guys all of a sudden change the ordinance back to where, nope, you have to be in your side yard or backyard. I live on a hill. My house is built in the hill. I have no side yard or backyard. And I have no place to park my own trailer. This is America, people. It's my property. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak to the council during the open forum portion? Please step to the lectern and identify yourself.
My name's Mark Leighton. This is my open letter to the citizens of Fergus Falls. I find the interaction between the city and the constituents to be less than professional. I find it demeaning and promotes a somewhat of a hostile environment. Obviously, there's a lack of positivity amongst the city employees and with the public. I also believe that it's less than ethical where the charter is not followed and city ordinances are not followed. I feel it's less than respectful. A simple reply. Possibly rude and inaccurate correspondence without any understanding of the situation as Mrs. Kraft has indicated, Mr. Ott has previously indicated, and obviously less than fair. There's a double standard here. So now with that foundation, Mr. Shire, I'm asking you to instruct all your council members, your administration, your department heads to reply to all communications from constituents, including mine. I'm aware the communication between the city and myself has been choked, and I'll assume that was based on your instructions. This will assist me in providing and continue to provide accurate information to the voters in Fergus Falls and the city administration to be more informative and kind. I look forward to any reply from any of these, any of these department heads, council members, administration, and mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council this evening? Please step to the lectern and identify yourself.
Yeah, I'm Curtis Drake. I'm here representing my grandkids. They...
Sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name. I apologize.
Curtis Drake.
Curtis Drake, got it. Thank you. Please continue.
My grandkids, they play with their toys every day out in the yard. They have bicycles, little kids' bikes that are won't like that high. They ride them around, and they got training wheels on them and stuff, and they don't, they're outside 24/7. The city ordinance says you can't have them outside. When the wintertime, we take everything out of the shed, and we put our winter stuff out, and we put all the summer stuff in the shed. And then the spring comes, we bring all the toys out for the kids, and there's no way in hell I'm putting them in, or neither are they, back in and in and out. If you want it done, you guys will pay the taxes on the property, and we'll do it. Otherwise, we're not doing it.
Mr. Drake, what's your address?
349 Freiburg Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
But that ain't where my grandkids live.
Where's that at, then?
I ain't telling you that.
Anyone else wishing to address the council during the open forum portion this evening?
Apologize for being a little late there. I was working. I don't have a fancy speech made up or anything like that.
Just identify yourself, sir. That's all we ask.
Nick Ott.
Nick Ott.
723 East Cherry. Got the big packet ordinances in mail. One was the may take sign. The other was too many vehicles. I would like to see that to go back to the way it was 2007, when me and Lynn Taylor had a discussion on my property, that you could own as many vehicles as long as they're licensed, insured, and operable. To me, parking them on the street is absolutely ridiculous. To me, having them on my own land is way better for the public safety of everybody. We got a lot of kids on our block, coming in and out between traffic, parked cars on there. It just makes for a clutter. That's what I've done. I was told I could only have four in there, so I went to the street. I just, I don't believe it. It's, to me, it's mind-boggling that you guys would rather have them vehicles on the street than on my own property. I have a two and a half double, two and a half lots there. There's plenty of room. They're all on crushed asphalt. I mean, I don't, I don't know what more to say. I think it's ridiculous. And it was voted on, from my understanding, on a roll call deal in 2021 that it got changed to four. And I guess I'm curious why, first of all, and what we got to do to get that re-looked at. I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, not nice-looking, in rather terms, yard is okay for our city. I'm not saying that whatsoever. All I'm saying is that vehicles that I own, that I worked for, that I owned prior to this ordinance change, now I'm getting told that I either got to store them off-site or on the street. And I just, I don't understand that. How you'd rather have them on the street, cluttering it up, making it a nuisance, more or less. That is a nuisance to me, having them all lined up on the street. Snow removal's going to be not so good, everything, you know? I just, I think I'm, I thought I was doing the right thing by having them on my own property.
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Ott. Again, September 27th, I think we'll ask staff to bring us back and including in that report to the council at 7:00 AM on the 27th. We'll ask for a little history and when it was changed, why it was changed, get staff to have some input, and then we'll also allow the public at that time to provide input, so.
Okay, so is that stating that there is a possibility that it will get changed again, or is that stating that everything's going to stay on the street?
So, we'll ask staff to bring us back the revised ordinance and the history behind it. Anything that's been changed can be unchanged by the members of this council, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ott. Anyone else? Please, step to the lectern and identify yourself.
It might not be a bad idea just to let people know that we can't change your ordinance just in question.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, there's a process, just so everyone knows. There's a process that includes introductions, readings, postings, publications, et cetera. So, it's not something that would change on the 27th, but the, we'll definitely have the conversation and have council direct staff to do anything that they wish. Please.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Aronson. I live at 1206 North Cleveland Avenue. I'm a renter. I've been renting there since 2017. The, with all the issues going around with the ordinances, I live on a corner, so technically, per the city, I have no backyard. So, I had to park a trailer and an RV out on the road. I got called by one of the police officers. They directed me to park it in my backyard, and I got a ordinance violation. Her, the police officer said, he looked at the city codes, it's safer in my backyard, and now I have a violation stating that I have a trailer and a camper in my backyard. So, I'm getting conflicting information from the city versus the law enforcement because I am right on a corner and it's on a hill. It is actually safer in my backyard. The biggest issue would be to revise kind of that corner lots, not having a backyard. So technically, you can't have a storage trailer or anything parked in your yard because I was told I have three side yards and a front yard. So that might be something to kind of take a look at for people that do buy on the corner and live on corners, is to give them a little bit of leniency. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Aronson.
Thank you very much.
We'll make sure that we look, bring that to the discussion as well. The open forum's a popular place tonight. Anyone else wishing to address the council? All right, thank you all for being here tonight. When we long to items one and two under petitions and communications, there's two resolutions. Yeah, and we'll close the public forum at this time. There are two resolutions acknowledging retirement. I just realized I don't have either of those resolutions in front of me. I will shortly. Now I do. Thanks, Lynn. All right, first one is a resolution acknowledging the retirement and five years of service for Kimberly McMurtry. Whereas Kimberly McMurtry has submitted her intent to retire effective September 16th, 2023, and whereas Kimberly was hired as a part-time liquor store clerk on July 2nd, 2018, and has remained in that position until her retirement. Now therefore be resolved the city, by the City of Fergus Falls City Council, to accept the retirement of Kimberly McMurtry and thank her for her five years of dedicated service as an employee to the City of Fergus Falls. The above foregoing resolution was offered at a regular city council meeting held on September 5th by council member Tom Ruffer and seconded by council member Laura Jobe, and was moved and adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Thank you, Kimberly. Second resolution is also recognition of retirement. Whereas Terry Eldine has submitted his intent to retire effective August 31st, 2023, and whereas Terry was hired as a police officer on November 12th, 1995, and worked with a number of canine partners. Whereas he was promoted to police sergeant on September 17th, 2006, and served in both the patrol and investigative units. Whereas on October 7th, 2012, Terry was promoted to lieutenant and then police captain. On December 20th, 2015, has remained in that position under the, until the present time. Whereas Terry has faithfully served the residents of the community, been an honorable member of the department, and loyal friend and team member to his peers. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Terry Eldine and thank him for his 28 years of dedicated service as a city employee. The above resolution was offered at a regular council meeting held on September 5th, 2023, by council member Scott Kwame, who moved its adoption to a seconded by council member Scott Rachels, and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved, and again, we thank Terry for his dedication to the people of this community. Under the consent agenda, there are 10 items this evening for consideration. If anyone would like to discuss any of those items individually, we'll remove them.
Can I pull the minutes from number one and number six, the resolution adopting proclamation?
Yes, number one and number six. Anything else? There are no others. I would entertain a resolution adopting the other eight items.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Scott. Second, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Item number one is a motion approving the minutes from the August 21st, 2023 city council meeting.
Obviously, I apologize I was absent for this, but I just wanted to clarify, under the awarding of bid, PI 9504, it says staff recommendation bid and alternates one through seven, nine, and 10 be accepted contingent upon the execution of change order number one. And I wondered if we have that change order in place and where we're at on it.
Yeah, thank you.
We have the change order in place. Thank you. With that, then I would make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes. Second, Tom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Item number six is a resolution adopting the proclamation policy and procedures.
Yep. Thank Gene for including my comments on the communication plan. And then on the proclamation policies and procedures, you know, we don't kind of mention anything about a time limit, and I wonder if that's something that we should consider. I'm going back to the gift day when we have like five or six videos to watch and five or six presentations. And, you know, that seems like a lot of airtime for sort of, you know, individuals. That's just kind of something to consider.
Maybe we just ask staff to keep that in consideration. I know that sometimes when we have outside guests coming in, either live or via virtual presentations, I know staff does try to consider what else is on the agenda and how to...
I think something, yeah, something to be cognizant of.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Your Honor, is that going to affect Bill's presentation next council meeting?
This doesn't apply to...
I don't think he meant it, but I just...
That's not a proclamation.
Oh, I know, but I just kind of thought maybe you're going on Bill.
With that, yeah, with that, I'll make the motion to accept.
Resolution, thank you.
The resolution, sorry.
Second, thank you, Laura. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have two items for consideration. The first is a second reading of ordinance number 43, 8th Series, the use of cannabis in public spaces. It's been before the committee. It's been discussed. It's had its first reading. If anyone has any questions.
Roll call, I think.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the sale of hemp-derived THC products in a B2 service business district at 1603 Pebble Lake Road as requested by Empire Two Incorporated, doing business as Little Chief. We'll welcome our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We touched on this very briefly at the end of the committee of the whole last week, that this would be coming forward to you. It has already been through Planning Commission. The idea tonight is to give you a chance to think about it, ask any questions you might have, and put any conditions that you might have on it. Planning Commission looked at this purely from a zoning perspective and did not vote to place any conditions at this point. The request in front of you is a conditional use permit for the sale of THC-derived hemp products, or hemp-derived THC products, which is currently allowable under state law. And here in the City of Fergus Falls, there are several businesses that are already operating this way. The request then is for Little Chief to be able to do the same as several other businesses that are downtown in our B3 zones. However, the way that we have our code worded currently, B2 zone would require a conditional use permit, which is why this application has come in. We will be looking at our overall zoning code and whether or not conditional use permits are going to be necessary moving forward, but we haven't made it to that point yet. So that's why the discussion is in front of you tonight. Again, there were no comments received from the public before the Planning Commission when they held their public hearing last week. They, the applicants were there. They answered any questions that any commission members had. I'm not sure, I think, did anybody make it tonight? Nope, they didn't make it tonight, but I can help answer questions as well if you have any. So, that is the presentation.
Thanks, Clara. With that, we look for a resolution to open up...
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Item for discussion. Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Questions, comments?
Just question. So this would be the first one in a B2, is that what you're saying?
For THC sales, yes.
Okay. How many are in B3 already?
I believe we have five licenses out.
And, you know, maybe, now, let's talk about the difference between B3 and B2 so everybody knows.
Sure. There's not a huge amount of difference between them. B2 is the business service district, and it exists essentially to be a buffer between B1 and B3. It's just not a use that we have marked as allowable in that zone currently, but in practice, there isn't much difference between B2 and B3.
Scott, did you have a...
Did Doc Ott review this? Is that something he does on this?
Yes, from the licensing perspective, yes, that has been run through the police department, the background check.
Excuse me?
The police department has a background check on each one of these evidence.
Okay, and it was, he approved. I mean, he had...
Yep.
Okay, I couldn't remember. I didn't, I read it, but I forgot to bring it with.
Resolution is saying other questions?
I had a question regarding the age limits. At the other businesses, are they required to have employees that are over 21 and the access to the building is only 21 and older? Or am I confusing that with something different?
So, in other businesses that are currently operating in B3 zones, I do think that they, I think our city code does say that they have to be over 21 for sales. In places like a convenience store, I don't know that they have those same restrictions in place. For the actual sale of the products, they are meant to be behind glass, so they are not accessible to the public. It's only the store managers, whoever's making the sales, that are accessing the products.
Okay. Where I can see that we could end up with a conflict, or at least a pretty significant question, is if we're requiring a brick and mortar store on the downtown to have only employees 21 and older and access to the building only 21 and older, and yet a convenience store can have employees as young as 15 or 16 working behind the counter selling. How does that work with this, even though the stuff would be in a restricted space? Do they have to call the manager in to handle a specific sale in a case like that, or how do we handle that kind of an applicant, that kind of a situation?
I suppose that is a condition that could be placed, is to allow the CUP that they would have to only have 21-plus making the sales. And I suppose it would be kind of up to the business how they would regulate that on their end. I don't know how much we can say about that.
I would just throw my two cents in here that I don't think that there should be any restriction past what's put on alcohol. I mean, convenience store employees sell alcohol all the time. I did when I was 16, I think. And I don't see any reason for any further restriction over and above what we already do for alcohol, tobacco.
Was, just for clarification, is the condition Scott's talking about, were those for THC sales or were those for the manufacturer? Was that, were those around the manufacturing?
That was a discussion we'd had surrounding the manufacturing. I think any other discussion about age limits would have been tied to the licensing process and our ordinance.
Which is a state, which is a state issue, right?
Well, this would be local licensing currently because it's the hemp-derived THC that this would be falling under.
Sure. But the Toms, wow, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we need to place any further burden on businesses, you know, have, trying to have somebody over 21 come in to sell a product. I don't, I think that'd be a little silly, so.
Your Honor, so are they, are they going to be selling different products than like Elevate and Sugar High, which are kind of quote dispensers?
They will be selling what's allowable under current rules. I don't know specifics about what those actually look like.
But it's on the same licensing?
But it's the same, it's the same license.
Yep.
Yeah, same state requirement.
Yeah.
Lynn?
One more point of clarification with this one is our current license, our current code says you cannot sell these hemp-derived THC products given of a liquor license. And they have already, upon your approval tonight, they have agreed and have it in writing. that you'll surrender your liquor license, they would no longer have that 32 license to sell, um, 32 low average.
Okay. Thanks.
Next, Lynn.
Other questions? Mr. Layton has a question or a comment?
Mr. Preymire and I were talking about this today, and I haven't read, if you will, the ordinance or what is proposed, but as an insurance agent, I look at this, and, um, most convenience stores have a cannabis exclusion, so I don't know if insurance has been, uh, addressed. No difference than liquor legal liability. If you're selling liquor, you need, uh, the proper insurance, so I'm not sure if the city's addressed that in this cannabis arena. Insurance companies having just as much trouble keeping up with it as the city is in regards to Minnesota sales. So, I would recommend that that be reviewed. My understanding today, and I've requested underwriting approval or underwriting clarification, that cannabis is excluded.
Any other questions, comments, or we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Preymire.
No.
Aronson.
Yes.
Rachel. Yes.
Joe. No.
No.
Rupert.
Yes.
The resolution fails.
Four.
It's four.
Oh, sorry. You're right, four.
The resolution fails, um, for three. It takes five affirmative votes to pass a resolution, so that conditional use, I'm correct in that, right? This is a resolution, it takes five affirmative votes to pass that resolution, so that resolution fails. Um, under presentation of claims, this evening, we have claims in the amount of $2,173,152.18. If we have any questions, we will direct them to our finance director.
In Jim's honor, I will make a motion to pay the bills.
Thanks, Tom.
I'll second.
Thanks, Laura.
And I got a question then for Bill, but I don't know whether, I mean, you might have to get back to me.
Go ahead.
For JK Sports, there's a five-scope system for $8,500, and I just want to, what is a five-scope system?
It's five scopes, so it's, um, for firearms, I talked to, um, Kyle Berger about that today, so it's for the police department.
Right, okay, thank you.
Because I thought you would probably ask. I wanted to know.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
You bet.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Preymire.
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel. Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Uh, there are no board, committee, or department reports, there are no reports from staff or administrative officers, there is no old, unfinished, or new business that I'm aware of. Lynn, do you have any miscellaneous announcements?
I got an announcement.
Yeah, is that okay?
Um, I'm usually, I'll talk to Andrew usually, but he's not here to let him know that I have an announcement, but just, uh, to let everyone know, the next town hall meeting that we're going to have is gonna be, um, September 20th. It'd be great if everybody could come to that, um, we have a guest speaker from 6:00